...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Selectmen's meeting minutes, Monday, October 15th, 2018, to Town Office at 5:00 PM present, where Shirley Humphrey, Hadley Bucher, and Judy Elton, staff with Phil Phil Town Manager was absent, Susan Frost Administrator, Assistant, several citizens. Item number one, minutes of the previous meetings read allowed by Hadley, October 1st, 2018. Motion to accept minutes as read and then the vote 3-0 to accept. Had the red minutes allowed for special town meeting on October 4th, 2018, and those on motion to accept minutes as read voted 3-0 to accept. Under item two, public forum, Dot Humphrey announced that the Historical Society and the American Legion Public 141 will meet on October 18th at 6:00 PM to discuss fundraising for the Legion to establish a memorial veterans' flag display and a bench on Allegiance property on Pleasant Street. Ronald McNeil stated ITCC will be hosting a Pink Night on November 22nd from 6 to 8:00 PM and hope all will attend. Earl Hughes said still getting Oda's every day and knows they have a rat problem. A neighbor had to hire an exterminator to come in. Selectmen want CEO Al Tempestra to go up to Martin Street and see if he can determine what is causing the rat issue. Can the landfill be causing them with taking in CDD? Joanne said heading down Great Noose Drive, she could smell the landfill last week. She has never smelled it before. Item three was unfinished business. Selectmen reviewed and signed Somerset mitigation plan. Under item four, new business, Jessica Willeck from Seabass Hook Valley Health, now known as Northern Life, handed out upcoming events and talked about what she is doing with fifth to eighth graders at Somerset Middle School, trying to keep the children on track. Asked the Board of Selectmen if they would enter into a lease agreement with Cowes Way for the snow season to house the town's pile trucks at one of the annexed buildings in the amount of $1,500 for the season. We would need to put insurance on the building and install some lighting. Voted 3-0 for Chris to bring a lease to Board at the next meeting. And how are we going to heat? I was unsure and said Chris would answer at the next meeting. Under item five was other, the gazebo roof repair quotes. Dave Kimball, $2,100. Dean Sides, $2,400. Belanger Builders, $2,950. Board voted 3-0 to accept Dave Kimball's bid for $2,100. Has Chris negotiated on taking down the old town hall yet? No, still working with contractors. And then item six, we signed warrants, respectfully submitted Susan Frost Administrator's system.
We accept this, right?
Second.
I'm also favoring, if you suppose. And we'll move on to public forum. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question. When you put something out for bids, is everything that you do put out for bids? For an example, the feasibility study to move the town transfer station, that feasibility study, was that put out for bid?
Don't think so.
We haven't, we haven't signed a contract on it. It was put into a proposal with TRC as a figure, but not as a required line item. So we have not, we have not checked any pricing on it at this point.
Can we see anyone else?
Yes. I was just curious, I know that there were some people from the DEP here at the Town Office a couple of weeks ago. Just wondered what that meeting was all about and what was discussed.
DEPs, which, which day? I've had DEP here several days.
Okay, so what was the discussions about on any, any or all of those?
The latest one was a week ago Friday. If I remember correctly, I'll probably should go look at my calendar to be sure I'm not. It was from the, I want to say Uncontrolled, I'm not going to be able to remember the name of that division. But it was a DEP division that is headed by Brian Baneski. Dani Oberry, Obree is her last name. Dani came here to look at information on historical data on the landfill. She came to review a variety of the booklets that we have just to make sure that they have the data in Augusta. And she was probably here for an hour, hour and a half reviewing some documents and so forth.
Was that the same day they went up to Lenny's and tested the water, do you know?
No.
It wasn't the same day?
No, no.
They did stop by that day too, right?
I'm not sure, I wasn't here that day. So I'm not, I don't think they did, I.
Because they said they were going to, that's why I was asking.
It's possible that they did, but I know one, no one said that they did. So I really am not sure of that because I wasn't here that day.
Okay, who was the, what did you say, Brian's?
Brian Baneski is the gentleman who's in charge. And Dani is a project manager who works under Brian. I don't know, I think Brian is a director, but I'm not 100% sure of that.
And he was here for what reason?
He wasn't here at all.
Oh, he wasn't?
Dani was here as the project manager.
Both, okay. There was also the lady from TRC here, I believe you met, at one of those, on one of those days.
Oh, yeah. Few weeks back, we did a training, an annual training session with TRC and the DEP. And we did our ONM manual training, our annual training. I don't recall the date, it off my top of my head, but that was just in the last couple of weeks, yes. Yep.
Okay, hearing nothing on, move on to unfinished business. Oh, I'm sorry. I brought in my dill that I had to call press control to get rid of those rats. Now, I'm probably wrong, but I feel that the landfill was where the rats was coming from. I've lived up there since 1974 and I never have been bothered with rats before this summer. I understand that there was a couple last summer too, but they didn't bother me. But this summer, they bothered me. And I, I have six holes in my home where they chewed through. And when the pest control person came, there was it last week? Or was it Monday? I don't know. They said you're supposed to be there noon, you got there at eight o'clock in the morning, I know that. And he said that at this time, he lost four traps to the rats and he didn't know where they were. But he reset the traps. And that bill has cost me over $300. And it would be more when he comes back to check again. And I don't feel that I should be responsible for that bill because I didn't go down there and get those rats, that's for sure.
Well, I'm sure that we've all had trouble one time or another.
I'm sure you have.
And we cannot ask the town to pay for our bills. There's something that's drawing them.
It is.
And it doesn't mean it's at your house. But it could be anything from animal food to bird seed.
I don't have bird seeds. I have two animals and they are outdoor maybe two hours, maybe three hours a day. And the dog food is in my home in a plastic cup, tub. And when I am not there, the dog food goes into that plastic tub. So the dog food is not drawing them.
But it doesn't even need to be at your house, it could be at a neighbor's.
Oh. Mr. Bucher there has lost a neighbor because of the rats in the garage and the water pipes that freeze up.
Do you want to come in and say?
No, I just want to say, well, when are you done with her? But I too have a rat problem in my house and I live down on 23. And that has not happened since, this has come up with the landfill too. I've caught three already, so there is definitely a rat problem. So I just wanted to put my input into that, that I too have been trapping rats and I got holes in my house and scratching and chewing that. And I have no animals or food out or whatever. I put everything up high, I just wanted to add that to that.
So we are responsible for the rats from the landfill then?
Well, who knows?
Is that what you're saying?
We don't know where they came from or what's calling them. I mean, look at up here on Commercial Street, we had a terrible time. But it wasn't anything to do with the landfill.
Well, no, it was to do with the tannery. The head bats in the tannery.
I don't. You know, I'm in the tannery for years. As much as we can sympathize.
No, you don't.
Oh, I'm sure we do.
Because I, I am a poor person in this town, and I mean dirt poor. And those rats have destroyed most of my home. It's really not fit to live in now. And nobody cares. Put it off on somebody else or on something else. When you know in your heart that that's where those rats are coming from. Because it's been.
You can't really say they aren't coming from the landfill.
No.
Can't say they are either.
I've never seen any rats, I've been up there. Never, I've never seen a rat from the landfill.
How often?
Transfer, as often as I want to go up.
No, you've never seen them because they're in my house, truly not!
Paula had a question.
Well, that's not what I was going to ask. Can you say for certain that they aren't coming from the landfill? Only that nobody's seen them there. So you can't say for certain. Why don't you have a trap out there?
Yeah.
At the landfill? Has a trap? There's a, what do you call it? Have a hot trap?
They have a hot trap. Golf on the side of the bank that they're trying to catch. There's a hole right inside the bank and they have it set for that golfer to see.
If it was rats we were trying to catch, wouldn't they have a hot trap? We all, it would be something that would kill them, hopefully.
22, yeah.
I'm going to get a sticker, I might go down and roll that.
No, it's a river rat, the river's just down the road, there's no way.
Do you have trouble, Debbie? You have any trouble?
I have.
Yeah. Yeah. Up on Great Noose Drive. Is that the same thing as the muss rat? Very big, that's a big, very big one.
I brought my bill in for you.
Yes, I'm waiting to see what.
And what did it say on it?
What did it say on it?
Yes.
It was an invoice for a cost associated with the.
Yes. Yes. And what did it say about the home?
I didn't read all the details on it, frankly. I can't tell you that.
Well, I can tell you. He said that the rats had chewed several holes in the floor of my home. And he also said that at this point, when he was here the last time, that the rats had still a burrow under my home. And he thought that the four traps that was gone, that they had hauled them down into their burrow. But he couldn't get under there to say if they did. But that was his thought on it, and he's an expert.
Well, I understand exactly what you're saying because the tenants before the tenant that I have in the double wide had that same problem. And after they left, when I went inside, there was holes in those walls. I had to replace floor, had to replace three sections of wall. And that was food in the area.
Wow.
I'm just telling you what I experienced.
Yes.
And I'm not doubting what you're saying either. I'm just saying my experience was, we got rid of the food. I repaired the floors and the walls and.
Yeah, but when was that?
Well, just before the tenant that's in there right now.
The tenant that's in there right now, up over the garage?
No, listen, the double wide I was talking about.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the tenant from the garage.
I had to repair the double wide, there wasn't any damage in the garage at that time.
There is now.
Other than the guy had 12 dogs in the bathroom up there.
Oh, yeah, two of them dogs attacked my dog.
I'm just saying, it wasn't a, a pretty thing either. But once we get rid of the food, the rats went away and I haven't had any trouble.
Well, there is now.
In that building.
There is rats in that garage now up in the.
And one of the problems there, I, you've seen me up there several times, I know. He had all kinds of soda bottles and stuff like that, which is a dramatic draw to rats.
Yeah. That's not why he told me he left.
Well, I work with him and I've had several conversations.
Yes, I know you have. And he's scared, afraid that he'll lose job if he says anything.
I'm not in management, so I can't imagine that.
Well, I can. I've had it done to me several times, you did this and you do that, you're gone. Well, most of the time I was gone.
It's time to move on. We beat this to death.
Let's put the letter from the code enforcement office.
Well, I'm going home. You can have your stuff. Talk to people down here.
So on your, item three, unfinished business, this is the letter from the code enforcement officer. October 17th, 2018, to the Select Board, Town of Artland. I look for rats and causes of rats showing up on Martin Street here in Artland. The only thing I could see was trash cans at 60B. That's my apartment under, over the garage. Did not have covers on all of them and they seem to be full. I could not see any bird feeders, but I did not go behind the houses. I also do not know how many dogs are on this street. Rats only go to food. There was also a note from MMA on rats and squirrels. The article linked an increase in rats and squirrels to the easy winner that we had last year. And I don't know where the easy part was, talking about the winner. There was nothing that stood out as an attraction for the rodents. And it's signed by Al Tempestra, code enforcement officer.
Yeah.
What was the date on that?
October 17th is when it was, I assume, written. I'm not, I'm not sure, Earl, if that's the day he went up there or not, but that's the date. This must be the first time.
All he did was just turn around right back down over the hill.
Well, this was, this was the first time that he.
I don't know about that one, I didn't see him. This one, there was probably two truckloads of trash piled up over there.
In my apartment area?
In the house, yes.
Which one?
The trailer, double wide, double wide.
And he didn't even slow down, so I don't know. I just wondered about the date. I didn't see him on the 17th.
Well, if there's trash up there, that's likely the rats.
Well, there's always been trash. There hasn't always been rats, so I don't know of none of that. There's always been dogs, there's always been food, there's always been nests. That's all I know.
It's a sad situation, just like now, we've got needles at my house, I don't like those either.
People on 23, they're all saying that they're, they're all killing rats now, so I don't.
Can you just keep a moment, you're going to look.
Definitely, I didn't know the trash was up there.
Well, they hauled it.
Yesterday, yeah, yesterday they hauled it. Except for there are three or four big black bags by the trash barrels, not inside the trash barrels, by the trash barrels.
Didn't know if it's trash or if it's stuff from the apartment upstairs.
I don't know what it is.
Oh, definitely, go check it. It's a real frustrating thing because I don't own the property really, but go check it.
Well, can we call the landlord that does own that?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Do you have the phone number?
You don't have to, I'll, I'll call him.
Oh, okay.
Okay, can we sign the lease?
That's already been taken care of.
Yes, because we don't own the building, we can't insure the building. They'll insure the building, we'll do the contents on the machines and stuff, so.
Right, has that been done?
Yeah, we have insurance on all of it, so, yeah. Yeah, we don't, we don't have, I don't know if Susan's had contact with them to tell them about storage yet necessarily because they haven't signed this. They have to have us sign a copy of the lease before they're doing anything else.
And so this is just powerizing the heat?
Yeah, we're not doing, the only heat we're doing up there is in a little small area. Know where the office was for shipping up there. We're just going to heat that little small area so they can have coffee in the refrigerator in there so they have a spot to go in and get warm and so forth. We're not going to try to heat the building at all, it's just, that'll just be cold storage. Yeah, it wouldn't be practical to try to do that.
Anything else under unfinished business?
Is there going to be somewhere where we can read it? Yeah, once it's signed.
It's got to finish being signed first.
On the beyond that side?
Um, I don't know if you want us to put it on the website, to be honest with you.
You want to look at it?
I'd rather read it on the, somewhere, get either a copy of it or some wherever you put it.
Yeah, you can get a copy of it.
Okay, I'm going to continue business on. And Eric Huddly, I'm on website.
Yeah, Susan said that he'd request it beyond the agenda.
President? I think we could make a lot of this stuff available on the website that have free resources to do the storage, it shouldn't cost the town much. Or if anything, should be zero actually, but. My concept would be to post a lot of material to public access, probably for a year or two, and then archive it onto a DVD where people that want freedom of information, they could reference to the archive number that would be assigned to each document. And then they could come into the town at some point in time, request a copy of the DVD or the file, which would be a heck of a lot easier for them to do the research for the people in the town because the database would show exactly what document they would need to have copies. So there would be no need to research it and dig it out of the files or anything like that. They just go to the DVD that's in archive and get the copy right there. It should be fairly simple and fairly inexpensive. The only thing I do request, since I'm getting up there in years and it passed away twice, is I have somebody that's interested, that's young, to learn how to do this stuff, whether it's coding or saving or storing or whatever, somebody that wants to learn something and get a pre-education basically, but on my experience. Right now I have 13 different email accounts, so I have a lot of free storage space from Google that I utilize for various groups. And once it gets to a certain point that I archive it on DVDs, it seems to work out very well, at least over the past six years. It's just something I'm proposing and I'm hoping you're willing to take advantage of it if you're willing. It would save, like I said, the freedom of information, it would be available to people immediately. And be as, if, say I wanted a particular document, I'd just download the file, I'd print it out at my home, so the town wouldn't be having any expense on copying or printing or anything like that. If there was a person that didn't have a printer at home, then yeah, either a friend could do it for them or the town would do that as it normally does anyway at their expense. But I think this could be a good idea going forward with the technology we have in today's modern society to help a lot of people. That's my proposal.
Thank you. Yes, I was, I should have probably been on here too because Eric and I had come in here that day and we did some research and Susan brought up all the books and everything. And so this is where this stems from, is that it's very hard to get information. And if we had it this way, it would be so much easier for the people. I mean, it's, it's public information anyway, so if it's more accessible. And then you said, like you said, town, people in town offices don't have time to do all that. And there was also the, brought up about the website and how it's not really maintained very well, at least in our opinion. And I was going to, and that's kind of what I had in mind when I said I'd volunteer, to keep that up, whether it be once a week or once a month or whatever. But to come in and put, like, when you go out for proposals, that should be on the website. We're taking proposals for such and such. And they should be able to go right on the website and find it. This agreement that we have tonight, that should be put on the website. And it's public information, at least things are, things that people should know about. That's just kind of where it stemmed from. And like Eric and I said, we would volunteer to do, to help with that, so.
The only real thing you need to post on the website that you currently have is one link to get to the other thing that would open up everything that you want. So it's not like you're going to do a massive update to the website to get this to happen. So it's not like you're gonna do a massive update to the website to get this to happen. And like when I come to town, I wanted a copy of the town report, and I had to go borrow one from somebody because, I don't know, you probably ran out, maybe, I don't know. I didn't come to town office for sure, but some towns...
We always have extra.
Some towns, some towns do run out, so, you know.
We most always have extra, so don't ever be afraid to come in and ask.
No, but it's just one of the ways that you could have it available for somebody if you did run out. There are a lot of things that could be made available, but, uh, it'd be a lot more comforting to citizens of a town if they knew that they could get their hands on it right now and just read it on the web, or uh, if they wanted to print a copy, they could print it on their own. But like I said, I wouldn't foresee needing more than two years of the time on the storage locations that I'm proposing, or what, it could be archived onto a DVD or something like that, and then they, with the database, they could just, I need DVD num- DVD number two thousand fifteen. And they could pull it and just get what they need and off and up, without having to go researching through thousands and thousands of documents, through cases and stuff like that. Because they would know exactly which one they needed.
Can I give anything?
I'll take your time to think about it for a while. I mean, I ain't rushing to, but I do need somebody young that wants to learn though, because, like I said, I'm not gonna live forever.
Like, it sounds like a good idea. We might as well get into the modern age, and if they're willing to start by offering the free service, volunteering.
Yes, it is a free, free service.
I think you could put it into, if you could have choices, so if somebody wanted to look at these kinds of proposals, that would be in one place and...
Yes, oh yeah, it'll be well organized, yes.
Yeah, so that they didn't just open it up and see everything.
It'll be organized by year and by month and by document.
Nicholas might be a good place to start. You might have somebody in, I don't know what their departments are, but you certainly might have somebody that would be interested in, uh, in that.
Yes, Doc. Who currently maintains the website? I'm not sure. Is it...
Uh, the girls actually take turns doing it.
Cause I'd like to see the meetings on there.
On the calendar, yeah.
The calendar.
Well, we don't post meeting minutes until they are approved by this board, so they usually go on the next day after that.
But I will go on there sometimes looking for meetings, and it's not always updated.
Like the calendar, it should have every selectman's meeting on the calendar. They should have whatever's going on.
Every selectman's meeting, we meet the first and the third Monday of every month.
We can't say that.
But it still should be.
Well, if we have a change, if we have a change, we post it in the paper.
Yeah.
So it's not... We post it somewhere. Actually, we can.
Yeah, but you should also have it on your website.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be...
And also, another file of mine would be to have the agenda on there so you know what you're gonna be addressing on the upcoming meeting. As, you know, as quick, as updated as possible. I mean, you know, there's gonna be something on, on maybe Friday that comes up that you didn't get, quite get time to put it on there, but, you know. The agenda should be on there too, so people know what they're gonna be discussing. They may want to attend, they may not want to attend. Different people might want to attend for different things on the agenda.
Yeah, we can check on that.
Yeah. Uh, we're gonna definitely look into it, because it sounds like a, a good plan.
Well, it's a proposal right now, and it's up to you with the town sources, and just, right now, it's free as far as I'm concerned. I don't know what somebody else in the future would do after I'm passed away, but, uh, at least get a start on it.
Okay.
Can you provide us that proposal in writing, please?
It'll probably take me a week, uh, to...
That would be fine.
Get it kind of formalized into a document, but, uh, I can give you a demonstration on thirteen different accounts I have for different organizations throughout the state and, um, whatnot, if you wanna see it. I mean, I can bring that down.
Do you think, um, your person would be willing to run how to do that with him?
I'm not sure, well...
Top number about that.
Yeah.
Cause that would be good. Once you get it all set up, it's easy to maintain. It's just getting it all put together.
It's, it's basically a spreadsheet that gives you a list of what the documents are, and then just scanning and storing the documents, and we're going back to the spreadsheet. And the spreadsheet itself is the only thing that needs a link to your current website. So that's the portal to get them.
It'll take some time to get it on there together. Initially, it's gonna be very tight.
Yeah, it's gonna be time consuming scanning and storing. The spreadsheet will be as a bill-as-you-go type thing, where when you scan something, you wanna immediately take it and put it in a spreadsheet with a link to it.
Could, if you could, Eric, put it in the proposal format and timelines with when you think you can accomplish things and so forth, and give us a schedule on it.
Well, I wouldn't wanna really get involved starting with it until the first of the year, but, I mean...
That's okay.
We start ready at the beginning of the year, and then we'll work forward as we go along, and we'll work backwards for other stuff as time allows, to kind of fill in back through old history.
That sounds good to me. Well, let's see. Yeah. Make this a proposal. Sounds good.
Uh, update on the solar conference. The solar conference is very interesting and very educational. Uh, I wanted to thank you for letting me attend there. Uh, I was concerned about having an opportunity to meet a variety of different developers, because there was a, a vast group there, and TIC did an amazing job with the, uh, process. They set up a, uh, they called it speed dating. We, uh, all went into a room. The landowners sat individual tables or the number, and the developers went to your table to talk to you if they wanted to. So, uh, they had conversations with six different companies. Uh, only one of them has reached out to me so far for follow-up and requested some more data. Uh, the process itself, uh, there are a lot of ups and downs with it. Maine makes it very difficult to do the process from a legislative standpoint, and it is a three-to-five-year process to develop it. So there's a lot of effort that goes into it on the front side, um, but, uh, it does sound like there could be a potential. It, I can't say that without a little hesitation, because, again, everything has to be lined up. They have to have the right resources to get near power. It can't be too far away. Uh, there's a variety of analysis that they do, and, uh, they haven't, none of them have offered to do that yet. Uh, the company that contacted me did ask for some property tax maps and any types of pictures we had of the property. Uh, I only had one item that I could send them electronically, so, uh, we'll just see where it goes, but it was very, uh, very educational, and, uh, it, there are some big, big projects being done. Sanford has one of the largest projects being done right at the moment, and, uh, I think they have a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and eighty thousand solar panels being put up at an airport down there, so, uh, it is real. Uh, there is interest from developers, and, uh, we'll just see where it goes from there.
Thank you. Do you have an abatement to sign? Yes.
So, we have land that we're going to use for solar, or trying to use for solar?
Uh, the, the, uh, lands that we have, yes, we have transfer station, I mean, yeah, transfer station site and the landfill site are the two sites that we have for property that might potentially have some, uh, interest from them, because they're close to, there's phase three power onto the landfill site. So, those are the two sites that the town owns that, that might, uh, might have possibility.
And we have a poll from it? Is this a new residence or...
Uh, you know, I don't know if it's a new one or a replacement. I didn't look at it, to be honest with you.
If there's anything in the first couple of pages, it's probably after all.
Bean's Corner and Ford Hill. Thought we already did that one. Okay. TDS.
Looks like they wanna do it together.
Yeah, they usually do. It's saying that it's, uh, twenty-four hundred sixty-five feet in, east of it. Off from, uh, Ford Hill, so, I don't, uh, would have to assume they're, they're replacing a pole or they're adding one for... I'm not, I'm not aware of any new houses up there, so I'm not sure. Doesn't give any names, it just gives a location.
Yeah.
But it's for Central Empire and TDS.
Chris? Uh, on the solar power, does it benefit the town with taxes or revenue or pre-electro, reduce electricity or anything?
Uh, there's a variety of ways you can do it. You can, uh, certainly it would be a tax or a piece of property. Um, you can use the power, so you can reduce power for the use, you know, by using it, reduce your power costs that way, or you can just out and outsell it and receive income from it. Typically, what they do, though, is lease the land from the owner, landowner, and just pay them a monthly fee. And usually that fee lasts for, they usually do a thirty-year timeline with two ten-year options, so it's a fifty-year, uh, commitment. Uh, again, it's, there's so many variables, it's hard to say that they're truly interested. They came and talked to me, they wanted to know about the size. Acreage-wise, we have enough acreage, so they're interested. It's just a matter of what the infrastructure is to, you know, they can't spend, they're not gonna run no power lines from here to Waterville. And it just depends on if we're close enough to, to a supply line, and I don't know anything about power, so I have no way of knowing if that's the case. Um, the other downside really is that Maine is very difficult to do it in. Uh, the developers prefer Massachusetts because it's easy and fast, uh, or faster. It's not, it's still a three-year permitting process, but, uh, sometimes it is as long as five in Maine, and they say Maine is tough, so, uh, but there are a variety of ways that you could benefit from it, uh, to sit here and say which is gonna be best. I couldn't tell you today because I have no way of knowing what, you know. Certainly, they would have to make proposals, and I suspect if one is interested and, uh, we have the infrastructure, infrastructure to support it, then it becomes a little bit more competitive and others might be interested, so.
I did one in, I owned eighty acres of land in the middle of nowhere in Oregon...
Mm-hmm.
That I bought for almost nothing, and figured I'd hunt on it one day, and never did. So a solar panel, there's an incentive in Oregon to do that, for instance. And we set it up, and I think they used all eighty acres pretty much.
Yeah.
And it's real close to DC lines, and it's, it's got what they want, so I'm very familiar with that if you ever, I mean, if it ever comes to...
Sure.
Something. I'm very familiar with going through that process.
Yeah.
I was just a landowner, but...
Right, right. Yeah.
We don't know if that's a house or if it's just a property.
Well, this is, well, you guys are given permission. They're in our right of it.
Right.
They're in the town's right of it, so they're within that twenty-five feet from center, so it doesn't, I don't know if it's going to a resident or they're replacing a pole, but they're putting a pole in our right. That's what this permission is for.
There's looks of this one on the website. Do I have anything else?
I don't have anything.
I have one more thing. I noticed the last time at the transfer station, the trees are getting bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger out of the whole area. Is that gonna be chipped?
I have no, I have no, I'm not trying to do it, I can tell you that. I've tried, I've had, uh... Lincolnus, I had them come look at it. I had a guy that was permitted to come do it, never showed up last year.
That's the problem.
It's a challenge, so I don't have anything right on for sure for a plan. The D E P did, I did ask them when they appeared last summer, if there was a potential to do a one-time run on it, and they said they would consider that, so I don't know, they want no store and so forth, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Kendall Davis has a chipper unit, you know, Chris?
What's that?
Kendall Davis has a chipper unit, or did.
Yeah, he, I talked to him, but he was here the other day, and I asked him if he had any interest in it, and he's, he told me that he typically, uh, rents the chippers. And I don't think that he actually owns it.
Okay.
And he said it's extremely expensive. He wouldn't, he wouldn't tell me a price, so I tried to...
Well, I, I just knew in the past that he was involved.
Yeah, I tried to get him to, uh, commit on a price or tell me what he might, if he was interested, and he was not, so. Or he didn't give me a price, let's put it that way. We need to find a solution.
We, just, did you decide on who's gonna do the... Is it Zingbaum?
Yes.
It's, um...
It was Dave, Dave Kimble.
Yeah.
We're in the local pickup.
Is it Zingbaum? And Zingbaum? Zingbaum?
Yeah, he, uh, I don't know if he's from Montana or St. Holmes. I think he was in St. Andrews. I think he's from St. Andrews.
Is he the one that...
Yeah.
So what's the price to have this one? What do you pay for this one?
Uh, it's, let's see, just a little eight, two thousand.
And he's the same one that did the lowest bid for this, I guess. But it may not be done this year, depending on whether...
Yeah, he hasn't said one way or the other. I guess he told Susan that he might have, it's, I haven't had a conversation with him, so...
As long as the price doesn't go up?
Right.
It'll, it'll last. Anything else?
What do you have?
Then we will sign awards.